purposes as those joining the meeting by telephone cannot see the chat and therefore will not be able to follow the debate. Although Dundee District and Dundee City councillor Neil Ic Poweri on twenty sixth January. The Logie Ward between nineteen eighty and nineteen ninety five, the Balgae Ward between nineteen ninety six and nineteen ninety nine, and the Riverside Ward between two thousand and two thousand and seven. Mister Poweri also served as a Bailey, a Deputy Lieutenant of the City of Dundee, and was a member of the Most Excellent Order of the British Empire. Deputy Lord Provost Bailey Scott wishes to speak first.
Thank you, Mister Many. Bailey Scott, please.
Okay, I'll start by saying Deputy Lord Provost, I think it's a good thing that we now acknowledge the passing of former councillors and that it's recorded in the minutes of the council. I think that's a very nice gesture for the for the family of the the men who's passed away. Only three or four of us on the council still will have served with Neil Poweri, but I can tell you he was a politician of some some significance in his day. You've heard from Roger that he served his twenty years as a councillor on Dundee District, Dundee City and Teyside Region. He served on three councils, which was quite unusual for someone to have done all that, and I served with him for seventeen of those years. He was leader of the Conservative group on Dundee District Council in the late eighties, and that was at a time when the Conservative group had fifteen councillors, heady days for us, and there was quite a different political dynamic in the city chambers in those days. As well as serving as a councillor, Lieutenant of the city, he was the Chair of the Licensing Board, he was a National Convenor of the Association of Prison Visiting Committees, he served a term as the Vice Chairman of the Scottish Conservatives, and he stood for Parliament in nineteen ninety seven in Dundee West, and you've heard from Roger that he was awarded an MBE for voluntary services across Dundee. Despite being an opposition councillor, Neil would often set the political agenda and would quite often have conveners and council officers at sixes and sevens. And he was also a formidable debater, and whether you agreed with Neil or not, his contributions were always keenly anticipated by everybody in the city chambers, and he would always speak for his full allotted time, and most of the time he would speak over his allotted time. And you wouldn't go miss many meetings without the convener asking him to to shut up and and sit down. And I always remember him having speaking at length without the use of notes, which always greatly impressed me. In most council elections, he stood and Neil secured more than fifty percent of the vote, and in the last district council election in nineteen ninety two, he recorded sixty three percent of the the vote out of a ward in the West End. And I think today the Conservative Party would be happy even if they got quarter of that share of the vote out of the West End today. So thank you for the opportunity, Deputy Lord Provost, for allowing me to say a few words about the passing of Neil Poweri.
Thank you, Bailey Scott. Deputy Lord Provost Bailey Keenan wishes to speak.
Thank you, Mister Many. Bailey Keenan, please.
I'll be extremely brief. Pass on my condolences to Neil's family. It's always a sad time when someone loses their life but they leave loved ones behind, and I acknowledge the fact that he was
Thank you, Bailey Keenan. And finally, Deputy Lord Provost, councillor Duncan.
Thank you, Mister Many. Councillor Duncan, please.
Thanks, Deputy Lord Provost. I wasn't fortunate enough to know they deceased myself, but I've heard often and well of them from my colleague Fraser MacPherson, who is on leave at the moment, and with your indulgence, I'd like to read, well, he would like me to read just a few brief words, if that's all right with you. Okay, I'll read what Fraser writes. Neil was a West End colleague of mine for the first six years I was on the council, and I am greatly saddened at his passing. Although Neil and I did not come from the same political stable, we cooperated extremely well on local issues as neighbouring councillors, and Neil became and remained a good friend long after he retired from the council in two thousand and seven. Neil was an accomplished public speaker with a sharp wit, and he was a really leading authority in local government. I visited Neil in January, and despite his illness, he was as interested in civic life as ever. Neil had twenty eight years of service on the district regional and city council, was a Deputy Lord Lieutenant of Dundee and a housing support worker who has dedicated nearly forty years of life to helping and supporting the community of Dundee. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that, councillor Duncan, and these are my comments, obviously, in the chair tonight, but also speaking on behalf of the SNP group, if you'll allow me to do that, and I want to thank you for those comments, and particularly the comments of Bailey Scott. I obviously didn't know councillor Poweri personally, but I think the tributes will certainly give us a measure of the man and the dedication he had to public service, to the people in the wards he served, and to Dundee. So I would like to respectfully mark the passing of former councillor Poweri. If you could join me in a minute's silence for reflection and contemplation, and that will begin now. Thank you very much. Thank you very much, everyone. If I could ask Mister Many to take us back to the agenda, please.
Thank you, Deputy Lord Provost. Councillor Crichton has indicated he wishes to make a comment.
Certainly, councillor Crichton.
Thank you, conviers. Just very quickly, because I know the group leader's already said, but I knew Mr. Poweri, so I just thought, as a Western councillor, I should just put on my, on the record, my condolences to his family. And I think when a councillor's name gets spoken about after he's represented the ward, I think that just shows you how great a councillor he was for the area, and even though he's not, obviously, my political tribe, I do respect him for all that he did for the West End. I think the people, it's a sore loss for the city. And just finally, I would like to remember him on his humour. When I knocked on his door before the last election, he opened the door and said, you're the other guy. He's obviously a new Fraser from his time on the council, and he was extremely funny and gave me a few pointers, so I will always be grateful for those pointers, and appreciate his hard work and service to the West End. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, councillor Crichton, for those comments. I'm sure they'll be welcomed. Back to you then, Mister Many, please.
Deputy Lord Provost, members of the council, there's one item of business this evening, the minutes for information and record purposes.
Do we have any questions on the minutes? I see no questions, so those agreed. Thank you. That then is the business. Thank you.
and Infrastructure Committee. We have the first item, please, Laura.
First item is declarations of interest. Are there any declarations?
Let's keep, give people a minute from home, just in case anyone wants to write something. In the meantime, I'll just declare an interest on item eight, as I have a relative at one of the schools that will benefit from the improvements. But I don't see anyone else coming in, so we'll move to item two, please.
I know that, sorry, that's noted. So enough, item two, Dundee City Council, Donalds Lane and Petrellyn Street, Dundee, stopping order twenty twenty four, and this is for noting.
Item three, the South East Plan, does anyone have any questions, comments? No, can this be noted? Okay, thank you. Next item, please.
Item three, sourcing strategy for procurement framework to supply play equipment for citywide play areas, and this is for approval.
So this report is asked and committed to approve a compliant procurement process to the direct award of play equipment for play parks in the East End, Middlefield and North East Wards, and as follows, to purchase play equipment to the combined value of three hundred and twenty thousand pounds in compliance with Public Contract Scotland Regulations twenty fifteen. Play equipment is for Long Hall Road, Pitari, Mid Park and Baxter Park play areas. The costs will be met via the play framework improvements budget and community regeneration fund within the capital plan twenty twenty four, twenty twenty nine. Delivery of the play equipment will align with installation works by contractors appointed through the DCC Sills Framework. The purpose of this procurement method is to provide a more cost effective method of accessing equipment. I'm just looking at comments. Councillor Shears, I believe, you're the first, please. Councillor Lynn, sorry, councillor Lynn, please.
That's all right. My my comments aren't of any great importance. I'd have been happy to say to councillor Shears, but I'll carry on anyway. I just wanted to say how pleased I am to see over a hundred thousand pounds being spent on improvements to the play area in Baxter Park. Because Baxter Park is the focal point of the Stobswell community, and I live near the park, and I I know that it's it's well used and that the current play equipment, whilst in good condition, considering that the length of time it's been there, it's really good to see it being replaced. How do we look actually at the items which were tendering for it? The medieval legends and tales origin manor house, I think I could personally have hours of fun in that. And I looked at the pictures and stuff, so I think I'm really pleased about these improvements to Baxter Park. So thanks for that, convener.
Thank you, there, councillor Lynn, and we'll look out for you on the play equipment. Councillor Shears, thank you for your patience.
Thank you. My comments just to welcome the commitment to accessible play parks. And coming from a family, my mum's a foster carer who specialises in disabled children, and none of this equipment is like gold dust all across the UK, so it's really, really welcome to be at sea. And not only for kids with disabilities and accessibility issues, but the families having siblings being able to play together. And the question is, is there a commitment that every play park in Dundee will have at least one piece of accessible equipment in time?
Thank you for your comments, councillor Shears, and I agree with your sentiments entirely. I don't know that I can answer that question tonight, but bring in Mister Boyle, can we maybe give some more information? Mister Boyle?
Thanks, give your advice, councillor Shears. Yes, there is that commitment to make every play park accessible, have accessible equipment. Thanks.
Happy with that. I thought you might be. Thanks, Mister Boyle, councillor Shears. Next comment is from councillor Bailey Scott, please.
Just wanted to ask if when it goes out of tender, that we include robustness in one of the Just wanted to ask if when it goes out the tender, that we include robustness in one of the, in the things we're looking for in the equipment? Because I'm thinking in particular of the landmark piece of equipment we had put into Castle Green last year in Brodick Ferry, which within a very short space of time was vandalised and was closed for an extended period until that was repaired. I'm sure it's not possible to make everything absolutely vandal proof, but I just wanted to make sure that when you're speaking to the companies providing this equipment, that you do ensure that there is quite a bit of robustness in it, so it withstands anybody who may wish to do more than just play with it.
Thanks Bailey Scott, I appreciate the comment and your qualifying that with you can't make everything absolutely destructible, but again, Mr Boyle?
Thanks, Bailey Scott, yeah, we do everything we can, we work with the play designers to ensure we've got the most robust equipment we can possibly deliver. Of course, that's got to be balanced with wanting vandalism can be difficult to work against, but we do everything we can to try and provide that reassurance.
Happy with that, thank you. Councillor McHugh, please.
On behalf of my constituents in the East End Ward, I'm delighted with the thousand pounds of investment in play equipment for Petterley Park. It's refreshing indeed to read a report at committee proposing investment, however modest, in the East End Ward. Excuse me, one of the most challenged communities in our city. And coming as it does, on the back of proposals to close a thriving community centre, a sports centre, a library and a primary school in my ward. The East End Ward needs and deserves additional investment if we are serious about addressing significant challenges facing this community. And I welcome this proposal as a step in the right direction.
I very much appreciate your comments councillor McHugh, councillor Anderson, next, please.
Thank you, I'd just say I'm delighted this work is happening, it's part of the climate, environment and biodiversity portfolio. But unfortunately, our committee is not allowed to consider tenders, but just really welcoming this level of investment along with high levels of investment across the whole of the city. My specific question was about how we actually ensure that the community are engaged in the process of designing the park, and if you could get a wee bit more information about that, that would be helpful.
Thank you very much councillor Anderson, I'll go to Mr Boyle in the first place, I don't know if you want to bring in someone else, Mr Boyle?
Yeah, thanks councillor Anderson, happy to look into that information, provide that to you, of course.
Thanks very much, Mr Boyle, to answer your question councillor Anderson, thank you. Bailey Keenan, please.
Convenor, I welcome the response that councillor Shears received from Mr Boyle in relation to the equipment going across the city when funds are available. And I maybe look to put Mr Boyle on the spot and ask when it'll be available for Clalow Park. I know there's a very active group up there that look after the area really well, put a lot of time and effort in. And, you know, it'd be good to give them good news to know that there's a bit of extra equipment coming in their direction soon.
Thanks Bailey Keenan, I'll go to Mr Boyle and maybe take that off table with you, but Mr Boyle?
Thanks councillor, thanks Bailey Keenan, yeah, we have previously reported to committee that we're undertaking a review of all the play areas across the city. And I think the comment that was made earlier on was around providing and considering when we put in that equipment, fully accessible equipment and we make that same commitment towards Clalow. I can't give any formal commitment about when we'll be doing further refurbishment work at Clalow, but hopefully Bailey Keenan can be rest assured that we have that commitment and be happy to pick any specific items up off table.
Thank you both, I don't see any further questions, so can this item be agreed, please? Thank you, I'll take that as agreement, next item, please.
Item four, tenders received by head of design and property, and this is for approval.
So this item is seeking approval to accept a total of four tenders of the combined expenditure in the region of six hundred and thirty thousand pounds for service and maintenance contracts for local exhaust ventilation systems and forges, installation of new plate coating at Petterley, East End, Long Hall Road and within the Cold Side and Western Wards as outlined. And approval is also sought for the implementation of the new mechanical framework covering heating, ventilation, sprinkler plumbing and mechanical works packages. Councillor Crayton, I believe you've got a question in the comment.
Thank you, Convenor, I just want to, on behalf of myself and Bailey McPherson, welcome the proposed improvements to Locky Park Play Park. Also, can I also ask if the repairs required to the equipment, as in the yellow seesaw etcetera, what is the update on that and when they will be complete?
Answer your comments and question councillor Crayton, Mr Boyle?
Thanks councillor Crayton, councillor Crayton, if you allow me to pick that issue up if you're off table, we'll get back to you the information you've requested.
Thank you. You happy with that councillor Crayton?
Yeah, I'll pick that up with Mr Boyle.
Great, thank you. Councillor Anderson, please.
Thank you, Convenor, I just wanted to welcome the significant investment in Dudop and Fairburn and Canpanney and Monker and Lawton and Rosebank and Cold Side Ward. Absolutely delighted, and we just need to get the Hilltown Park in there as well, Mr Boyle. So just to welcome that investment for Cold Side and look forward to seeing that work being carried out. I did notice that we had tenders here for two of the earlier projects, but nothing for Baxter's Park. Will the tenders for Baxter's Park come forward in a future report?
Thank you councillor Anderson, I'll pass over to Mr Boyle again, please.
Thanks councillor, yes, I can reassure councillor Anderson that will be the case, yep.
Thank you, councillor Flynn, please.
Yeah, thanks Convenor, just my colleague who's just got in there before me with regards to what's happening within the Cold Side Ward, but I think it's really important to note that even the sourcing strategy of approximately three hundred thousand pounds for other play parks and this included in this report here, another five hundred thousand pound reinvestment in play parks is absolutely welcomed in all the play parks across the city. I'm sure, and I'm sure the children and the families will actually appreciate all the work that's been done there. So I'm not withstanding the fact that with the Moean Ward, I'm delighted to see that happening. And as councillor Anderson hinted, Hilltown Park needs to be done, Mr Boyle. But no, thanks very much for that, it's welcome, the investment within the play parks.
Thanks very much councillor Flynn, and I would be remiss not to note that Long Hall Road in my ward has benefited from those works as well. And I'm sure it'll be very greatly welcomed by the constituents. I don't see any further questions, so can we agree this as well? Thank you, the next item, please Laura.
Item five, purchase of equipment, recycling improvement fund, household waste recycling centres, this is for approval.
So this item is asking committee to approve the purchase of equipment for Bodovee and Riverside Recycling Centres as follows. To purchase two static cardboard compactors from the Pretender Scotland Excel Framework, Waste Disposal Equipment oh nine twenty three. It's recommend the offer of forty seven thousand four hundred and seventy pounds from Bergman Direct Limited to be accepted. And to purchase sixteen skips from the Pretender Scotland Excel Framework, Waste Dispose Equipment zero nine twenty three. It's recommend the offer of a hundred and eight thousand three hundred and forty pounds from Glasgow Waste Containers Limited to be accepted. The cost will be met via the grant provided from the Scottish Government Recycling Improvement Fund, plus allowances which are included within the general service capital plan twenty twenty four, twenty twenty nine. Councillor Anderson, please.
Thank you, Convenor, and again, this is part of the climate, environment and biodiversity portfolio. I just wanted to take the opportunity to thank the team for securing that phenomenal grant from Zero Waste Scotland. We got six hundred and ninety three thousand three hundred and eighty three pounds, which is a considerable contribution towards the work we're doing here and just that we're very good at ensuring that we've got that money and we're managing to spend it in the very short time span we've got left. So just to pass on those thanks.
Thank you there councillor Anderson, I'm sure officers will be grateful for that, and I think it's always important to highlight we've successfully bid for external grants such as this that allow us to make improvements in the city. I don't see any further comments on this, so can this item be agreed as well? Thank you, next item, please.
Item six, Dundee City Council, variation of waiting restrictions, order twenty twenty five, and this is for approval.
So this item seeks approval to vary parking restrictions at ten locations to improve road safety, prevent disruption and enhance environmental amenity. If any questions in this one, please. Yeah, councillor Crayton, please.
Thank you, Convenor, and I'm being slightly greedy in asking for two questions, if you would indulge me, I'll take one at a time if I may. The first one is just in regards to Kinlock Park. Should the no daytime waiting, not be no daytime waiting on weekdays? As me and Bailey McPherson understood, the restriction was not required at weekends as it was a workday issue, so just looking for clarity on that one.
Thank you councillor Crayton, I will give you both your questions, I'll pass over to Mr McNamara to answer that, please, Mr McNamara?
Yeah, thank you, Convenor, thank you for the question councillor Crayton. You're correct, it is weekday only, so evenings and weekends are not included in the prohibition.
Thank you, Mr McNamara. Does that answer your question councillor Crayton?
Yeah, that answers that one, thank you very much, and just the second one, thank you for letting me have it, is just secondly in regards to Pennycook Lane proposal. Can I assure you that the settled position will be accompanied by crystal clear signage as part of the lane enforced and not enforced, as it's not been really clear in the view of the residents. Can I also ask why the hatched area in black on the illustration at the south west end is to be removed from the list of public roads? Is that not where the council sought removal of unauthorised bollards as the land is Dundee City Council owned and should revert to public park?
Thank you councillor Crayton, again, go to Mr McNamara?
Yeah, thank you, Convenor, so can confirm that signage will be erected in regard to these changes. And the changes to the list of public roads, an exercise to tidy up the redefinition of the two areas which are noted at the western side of the car park. So it won't make any change to the designation of these bays or the tars, it's just an opportunity to re-designate them.
Thanks for the clarification, Mr McNamara, to answer both councillor Crayton?
I might take this one off table, just the residents are looking for just crystal clear clarity on that one, but I'll probably take it off table, thank you.
Okay, thanks very much, councillor Flynn, please.
Yeah, thanks Convenor, just following on from councillor Crayton with regards to Kinlock Park, which really stands out from the rest, and the rest of my agency are fine. But I just want to be assured that although it's not in my ward, that all the residents within this area are going to be consulted clearly on this. Because there's issues for me with regards to restricting visitors during the day, healthcare workers etcetera, who maybe need to visit these homes. And I find it quite strange that we're actually isolating a whole area with no parking during the day. And I just want that reassurance, that for example, there will be letter drops in all the doors, rather than just something put on a lamppost as per normal. Because we are, in my view, we seem to be isolating this whole community, and I find that very strange. So if I get that assurance from officers, I'd be welcome, thank you.
Thanks councillor Flynn, Mr McNamara?
Yep, thank you, Convenor, so has been some prior engagement work being undertaken with the residents and there's a majority of residents that are in favour of these proposals. What I would say is that through the public noticing process, we will be able to, depending on what comes through the way of representations, remove parts of the order, but we can't add parts of the order. So there is some sense in extending the order to the full lengths of the roads in order that you can remove. Whereas the alternative would be that we wouldn't be able to add in parts of the order. It does look quite extensive, however, it does suffer from a lot of commuter parking. And I would also note that the properties are all three driveway or more.
Thanks, Mr McNamara, councillor Flynn?
Thanks Convenor, I think that's, you've answered my question partially. You and I think it's probably a request because it's such a small area, that all residents are made aware of this clearly. Because the impact on not being able to have visitors during the day, no health workers etcetera, is going to be quite clear. And I think that could be an issue which we could be going to be fully aware of that unless we tell them clearly what we're doing. Thank you.
Okay, thanks very much councillor Flynn, I don't see any further questions or comments on this item, so can this be approved? Thank you very much, next item, please.
Item seven, publication of Dundee City Council Local Development Plan twenty nineteen, delivery programme twenty twenty five, and this is for approval.
So this report seeks approval of the delivery programme for the Dundee Local Development Plan twenty nineteen, setting out progress made and implementing the plan's policies, proposals and various housing allocations. Obviously, there's been quite a few changes to the format of local development plan and entire planning space in general. So maybe just bring in Mr Hamilton, head of planning, to just briefly speak to this, Mr Hamilton?
Thank you, Convenor, members may know that this is the first time we've brought a delivery plan to the committee seeking approval, and that follows some change that's been introduced as a result of the new planning act that's approved in twenty nineteen. The delivery plan does look at what efforts are being made by the council and by partners to deliver the policies, proposals and site allocations within the two thousand and nineteen local development plan. But I think it's important to note that we are also actively engaged in the process of reviewing that local development plan at the moment. And we will be bringing a report to committee later this year, setting out as a first stage of that review, the evidence report for the new local development plan.
Very much, Mr Hamilton, are there any questions on this? Councillor Anderson, please.
Thank you, Convenor, thank you for that clarification, because I was slightly confused about the status of this. So this is basically an update on the original plan, but the new plan will come back to the committee for consideration, so thank you for that clarification. I've added up the number of houses over the years, and I just wondered if you can confirm how many of those properties are going to be affordable housing? I assume a lot of them will be because they're, you know, they're basically housing associations. But I just wondered if we could get an update perhaps after the committee about how many of the properties are affordable?
Thanks very much councillor Anderson, I'm sure we could look into cycling that to members, but Mr Hamilton, can you confirm? Yes, okay, absolutely, well, we're done. Okay, so that being said, is there any further questions on this? Nope. This is approved then, thank you. Next item, please.
Item eight, sourcing strategies by head of design and property and head of sustainable transport and roads, and this is for approval.
So this item seeks approval of the six sourcing strategies to commence with the procurement exercise for each work stream. The strategies contained in the report comprise eastern primary school window replacement phase one, servers and the maintenance of fire detection, alarm, emergency voice communication, public announcement and voice activation systems, nurse call systems at King Smart School and the Oakland and Wellgett daycare centres, public space CCTV maintenance, cycling services and school bus network service. Any questions on this sourcing strategy? Councillor Duncan, please.
Thanks, Convenor, yep, glad to see mention on page eight to one of the window replacement at Eastern Primary, excuse me, which is good news. It reminds me of a question I asked on the committee on the twentieth of January regarding other schools and their current condition in regards to A, B, C etcetera, and what improvements would be required to bring them up to A. And I've been in touch with officers, you know, about these questions, which I'm still waiting for the answers for. But could I ask officers, particularly where they're here at the meeting, to also give me similar information with regard to Eastern Primary? In other words, which is mentioned tonight, in other words, what is its current condition? And what actions would be required to improve its rating, if indeed any improvement is required?
Thank you councillor Duncan, I'll bring in Mr Martin with his juncture, if you can maybe answer that or give more information at a later date, Mr Martin?
Thanks, Convenor, thanks councillor Duncan, yeah, I'll confirm, we'll go and look at the condition for Eastern and come back to you with a response on that.
Okay, thanks for that, Mr Martin, are you happy with that councillor Duncan?
Yes, and other appropriate officers, I'm sure will have taken note of my comments and still needing answers from the twentieth of January, thank you.
Yeah, and that will be noted, thank you. Are there any further questions on this item? Can this be approved? Yeah, that's approval, thank you very much, next item, please.
Item nine, Business Loans Scotland, and this is for approval.
So this report provides an update of the operation of the Business Loans Scotland, noting there are no plans to continue lending through the scheme. Dundee City Council's share of legacy funding in the scheme amounts to just over a hundred and thirty one thousand pounds. Scheme provides for the withdrawal of this funding on the basis the money is invested in pursuit of economic development objectives. It's recommended that funding is used to support a proof of concept fund programme in partnership with the University of Dundee with the aim of encouraging spinning companies in the life science and healthcare sector. Councillor Shears, please.
Thank you, I'm not sure if you'll be able to answer the question because it would be prominent on another organisation's finances, but given the challenge that Dundee University is currently facing at the moment, do we have cast iron guarantees? do we have cast iron guarantee from them that they will be matching the funding from us?
Thanks for the question, councillor Shears. I'll bring in uh Mr Hamilton to ask, uh answer that. Mr Hamilton?
Thank you, convenor. I can confirm that the University of Dundee's contribution will be in kind, rather than a financial contribution, but university uh staff will support this um this project uh with their time.
Thank you, Mr Hamilton. And see you, councillor Shears. You're happy with that answer, so thank you for the question again. Uh, I don't see any further questions on this item, so can this be approved? Thank you. I'll take that as approval. Uh, next item, please.
Item ten, UK Shared Prosperity Fund 2025-26, and this is for approval.
So this report provides an update on the UK Government's Shared Prosperity Fund for 2025-2026, and seeks approval to continue the delivery approach of the current 2022 to 2025 programme. The funding will continue to support a range of interventions, including the Dundee Partnerships and Employability Programme and local business supports through business capability. There'll also be challenging uh challenge funds that will be open to bids from organisations to deliver uh projects aligned with the fund's objectives of communities in place, people and skills, and supporting local business. Uh, councillor Duncan, I believe you've got the first question.
Uh, thanks, convenor. Just a quick question regarding on page ninety-two, four point four. Excuse me, there's mention of um people and skills, a particular way with regard to the numbers of young people who are at risk of becoming so-called neat in Dundee. Um, this the this follows the quite awful um figures regarding unemployment and that kind of young age group, which we heard about at scrutiny committee. Um, so I'm just wa- I'm just wondering from officers that will this funding? Um, hopefully the answer will be yes, but will this funding coming available help to drive down these um quite astonishing and alarming uh numbers? And in other words, getting younger people into some sort of positive destination?
Thank you for the question, councillor Duncan. I think that we're very aware of the issues facing young people when it comes to employability and the need for the figures to improve, and hence why I reported came to uh this committee last year in terms of renewing focus on that. But I'll bring in Mr Presswood to elaborate further. Mr Presswood?
General, thanks. Uh, the uh the figures which were recently published are a very small sample and sadly Dundee performs very poorly as previously. We anticipate that there will be um a further more comprehensive uh uh set of data published later in the year. Uh, and we have seen a tremendous amount of work following from the uh uh the 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 report, which the convenor has highlighted. Um, in terms of this funding, I confirm that some of the funding is available uh for investment in young people, those um in danger of the 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 not achieving a positive destination. Um, and that is managed by the council's in-house uh employability team and external partners as well.
Thank you very much, Mr Presswood. I think it's a very helpful answer. I hope you, councillor Duncan, are reassured by that.
I'm I'm actually there, you know, in full agreement that anything that we can do, there's there's no magic bullet, it's obvious way, but anything that we that we can do, and think particularly to rescue younger people from uh the the, you know, the horrors of unemployment frankly. Um, you know, which must be very disputing when you're meant to be starting out in a life when actually what are you meant to be doing? So I'm reassured that, you know, this might go some way towards addressing that.
Apologies, I had the microphone on there, so I don't know how this this sound was, but uh thank you for, again, your question and your answer, and I think, hope you can be assured that employability is very much at a focus uh of us, uh of mine in particular. Uh, we're very concerned about the figures, uh as you yourself have highlighted. Uh, and we'll continue to look at ways in terms of boosting youth employability, uh youth employability and employability overall. So thanks again for your comments, councillor Duncan. Uh, councillor Black, you've got the next question.
Thank you, convenor. Uh, looking at this report, there's quite a handy sum of money there, two point four million pounds. Uh, I believe that forty percent of it is earmarked already for existing projects. That leaves quite a large sum of money available for people to bid for. And some of it's capital, I think half a million is capital, isn't it? And about one point nine million is for revenue. So could I ask, and for a bit more detail about how the funding will be allocated, how people can make bids for that funding? Um, I presume it's organisations would be able to put a bid together to create a visitor attraction or enhance a visitor attraction or support some employment or uh support business in some way, which are the three aims of the of the the grants? So get a bit more information about and some warning of when bids will open so that people can be ready with them, something prepared. Thank you.
Thanks very much, councillor Black. A very pertinent question. I'll bring in Mr Presswood to answer that, please.
Uh, Chair, many thanks. Um, i- in terms of the process for allocating this, it's a similar process to last year. We will uh launch challenge funds for a number of these. Um, now what we propose is to bring an annual report forward, which will set uh out the approach. And as you know from the report, uh there will be a report, a report brought back to committee for the twenty-four, twenty-five uh year. Uh, what I propose, if councillor Black is happy with this, is that we circulate more details to elected members once the challenge fund is launched, um setting out all all the data that's in the public domain to allow you to share that with constituencies or or groups that you're aware of.
Thank you, convenor.
Thanks, Mr Presswood. Councillor Black. Uh, next question is councillor McHugh, please.
Sorry, um I had a similar question to councillor Black. Um, four point six refers to bids from organisations. Um, can can someone clarify what do we mean when we say organisations? Are we including community groups? Um, in in that cohort?
Thank you, councillor McHugh. Uh, Mr Presswood?
Uh, I I think it very much depends on the nature of the specific proposal, but I think in principle, yes. Um, depending on the type of activities that they're involved in, but again, we'll confirm the the precise rules for the challenge funds to all elected members, councillor McHugh.
Thanks very much, both. Uh, councillor Anderson, please.
Convenor, my question's in relation to paragraph four point five, which explains that you would like to effectively deliver the programme through the existing governance arrangements. Um, I just wondered if you could clarify what those existing governance arrangements are?
Uh, convenor, many thanks. The um the 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 process for uh the administration of the scheme uh is set out in in the previous report, which is then summarised in this one. So effectively, the the myself and the director of corporate services will review and responses from the challenge fund once those are received. And then we will encourage the um the 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 partners that have been successful to implement immediately their projects. Because as as members will be aware, there is a finite amount of time for investing this fund. Uh, and we simply don't have the opportunity to do multiple stages of governance. Um, but what we do propose is that each year there'll be a full report setting out in detail what this money has been invested in, and that'll be brought back to committee, uh I think early in the spring.
Sorry, convenor. So can I just come back? So essentially, there's no democratic governance of this process from Dundee City councillors?
Chair, I think this report is the look forward, uh which sets out in broad terms the rules. And we will, um as the other elected members have requested, we will supply more details of the challenge fund. So that will be in the public domain, and at the end of that process, we'll bring forward um the 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 results of the uh the the year's activity, so members get visibility of that. Uh, I must say that um the fundamental point that councillor Anderson makes is not lost on me, but it's very much the nature of this incremental one-off um grants, which a number of these economic developments funds are are provided on, which have very, very tight time scales.
Okay, thanks very much for that. Uh, councillor Flynn, please.
Thanks, convenor. I think I take on board some of the comments that have been made already with regards to the funding levels here and outlook forwards. Excuse me, to seeing the report uh for twenty-four, twenty-five with the funding that was spent. But I think we'll have to, when four point three, it's very clear there's a decrease of seventy percent compared to the twenty-four, twenty-five allocation. Notwithstanding, the actual multiplier has been cancelled. And I think going back to councillor Duncan's comments with regards to people and skills, the benefits that helps with regards to the projects we're here. So I'm disappointed to see we've actually seen a reduction in this funding from the UK government. Uh, but I would like to ask Mr Presswood, excuse me, will we likely get a report at the end of twenty-five, twenty-six to how this was all spent as well?
Yes, confirm, convenor, there will be a report at the end of twenty-five, twenty-six to to summarise how this has been invested.
Thank you very much, Mr Presswood. And again, I would just like to to highlight uh how contingent uh the employability work that we do in the city is on this funding, which is one-off. Uh, and it on this occasion, it's a rollover of previous projects, is making much of this because of the nature of it, as has been explained, but it's very difficult trying to continue these projects and employ people in crucial positions about getting people into employment when we don't have certainty of that funding. So I would echo those concerns. Uh, that being said, can this report be approved? Thank you very much. I'll take that as approval, and that is the business of the Fair Work Economic of an Infrastruktur Committee.
Good evening and welcome to the City Governance Committee. Over to you, Willie, please.
Uh, thank you, convenor. Firstly, are there any declarations of interest?
I don't see any, so just move on. Willie, please.
Yeah, thank you. There have been no declarations. Take Sean's item two, Minister of Meeting of Personnel Appeal Subcommittee of thirtieth of January, which is submitted for noting.
Are there any questions or comments? We don't have any, so just move on, Willie, please.
Yeah, thank you. Item three then, before his capital expenditure monitoring report, this is for noting.
So the review more, uh sorry, capital expenditure report is per normal, and the committee are asked to note the report. Uh, councillor Duncan, please.
Uh, thanks, convenor. Just just a brief question. There's a mention, um excuse me, of a of an underspend here. And um I'm wondering, is that down to the contractor, for example, not undertaking scheduled works in the original agreed time? Uh, I'm just wondering what the reason for the underspend is, and also can we be confident that the original estimated completion date uh for the project still stands?
I'll bring in Mr Thompson to answer that in the first instance.
Thank you, convenor. Can I just check first, councillor Duncan, the project that you're referring to? Sorry, didn't pick that up.
Oh, it's the 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 campus one, sorry.
Sorry, Craig, I couldn't hear that either, sorry.
They they
You're muted.
Sorry, sorry, the Eastern Campus one, I'll get this right.
Thank you, councillor Duncan. Um, can I perhaps ask a colleague from City Development to confirm the the reason for the slippage?
Uh, can I bring in Neil Martin, please?
Thanks, convenor. Thanks for the question, councillor Duncan. So in terms of, uh, it's more a re-profile of spend, so on a a project of this significance, uh changing work packages and some of the durations of a complex programme is then reflected in the change of uh spend profile. In terms of the overall programme, the contractor's still projecting to finish as per the planned completion date.
Thanks, Neil. Does that answer your question, Craig?
I think that's fine. Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I don't see any further questions on this item, so we'll take the report as agreed. Thank you. Willie?
Yeah, thank you. Item four, the revenue monitoring, you're asked to give the recommendations.
Again, this is the monthly revenue monitoring report, or regular monitoring report, and again, the committee is asked to note and agree. Uh, councillor Coleman, please.
Thank you, Mr convenor. At two point one point D, it states expenditure will be cut by limiting overtime, ceasing avoidable expenditure on supplies and services. Can officers please expand on this? Will these steps result in reduction in service delivery? Because it strikes me if less work is undertaken and fewer supplies and services are purchased, and self-evidently, less delivered, that less service delivery will take place.
Thank you, Mr Thompson. Can you answer that? Wait, Robert?
Thank you, convenor. So we're seeking within the council to manage our resources to come in on budget, so it eases the pressure for us in future years. I think it's inevitable that if we spend less, then there will potentially be an impact on the services that we're able to deliver. Officers are working hard to ensure key frontline services are protected. So we're making sure that posts in relation to schools and in relation to care are filled, but wherever possible, we're examining carefully expenditure and cutting back on anything or holding back on anything that we can defer with the aim of managing within our resources for the year, because that will ease our pressure for future years, convenor.
Okay, councillor Coleman, answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Uh, can I go to Bailey Keenan, please?
Convenor, I was uh quite shocked this week when I received uh an email saying that the Health and Social Care Partnership had to go to consultation, because they've got a black hole of about nineteen point seven million. And I've never really seen that reflected in in the revenue monitoring reports that we have. Although it does mention the risk sharing, uh that there needs to be uh between the integrated joint board and health service. So I'm wondering, uh now that officers are aware that there's a nineteen point seven million pound black hole, that there's a risk sharing agreement, perhaps they could give council an overview of what that risk sharing agreement means. And I'm really wondering whether the, within that risk sharing, officers think that we should be making a provision within our budget to help address some of the issues that are going on within health and social care, given that it's people in Dundee that are likely to receive a very much reduced baggage if some of these things go ahead.
I'll bring in the chief executive in the first instance, please.
Thanks, convenor, and thanks Bailey Keenan for the question. The information in the revenue monitoring report focuses on current year overspend, and officers have been reporting to committee the projected overspend within the IGB budget in the current financial year twenty-four, twenty-five. The deficit which the IGB are currently out consulting on relates to twenty-five, twenty-six, and that would be for each um party um within the chamber to consider what choices they want to make within their proposed budget, which will be set next week. The risk sharing agreement is part of the integration scheme, which I believe was reported and approved by committee in twenty-twenty-two. And broadly, the risk sharing agreement is that should the IGB overspend, they move into a recovery plan, which the IGB currently have, and it was presented to committee for noting. If then the recovery plan can't remove the deficit, then they use their reserves, and only when the reserves are removed would you then move into risk sharing, and that risk sharing, as per the integration scheme broadly, is one-third of overspend to the council and two-thirds to NHS T sides. Hopefully, that answers all the questions, convenor.
Thank you. Uh, Bailey Keenan?
Yeah, just just wondering why the, you know, when you go to consultation, officers' recommendations uh right across the board, yet we're we're not hearing whether there's an officer's recommendation that if we put some money in the IGB, would resolve some of the problems moving forward? Uh, you know, I find it a bit strange that we're not getting that level of guidance. You know, is that a case we should just ignore? There's no risk? Or should we be counting a risk in, in which case making provision?
Bring in the chief executive again.
Thanks, convenor, and thanks Bailey Keenan for the follow-up question. So the chief officer of the IGB, who's on the call and may want to subject the convenor's agreement um outline um and provide their view, we have been reporting on the risk. It is included within the council's um risk plan that's reported via the council leadership team. Um, again, I would emphasise that currently the overspending twenty-four, twenty-five is being covered, is covered by the reserves. It wouldn't be inappropriate to make a provision within the current year, because the deficit that has been consulted relates to anticipated spend in twenty-five, twenty-six. Therefore, again, it would be for each political group when preparing their budget on the advice from officers to consider when whether any provision should be made within the retrospective budgets that will come forward. Should any elected member have any queries, then happy to consider those out with the council. And I am assured that the chief officer is providing advice to the chief, uh to the integration joint board. Thanks, convenor.
Thank you. Uh, Mr Berry is online. And this, sorry.
Another question.
Hold on, hold on. Mr Berry, would you like to come in and make any comment?
Thanks, convenor. Um, no, I think the chief executive has covered the 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 position um quite clearly. I think, no, from from my own position as chief officer from the IGB, it's really up to both the council and NHS T side um to um decide whether they wish to um kind of provide any additional funding to the IGB. Um, the position that we are kind of going out to consult on is based on um the known pressures that we expect to have for twenty-five, twenty-six against our assumed kind of funding. expect to have for twenty five, twenty six against our assumed kind of funding position from both parties. And which is why we're kind of looking at the deficit just now. So, um, as I say, it's really, really up to kind of both parties to, to agree um, what funding, if any, to provide to the IGB.
Thank you, Mr Berry. For your comments. Uh, Bailey, can I let you come back in once more?
I, I was just really wondering whether officers of council would be given some guidance as to whether they've seen historic growth in certain areas, in which case they'd expect that to be built in. And it maybe gave me a bit of a better indication as to whether there should be provision made. I would, I would have hoped that officers would have addressed that, but it appears that's maybe not the case tonight. Uh, but it would have been better if we'd had some information.
Thanks very much. And I think there's probably a case there possibly to have an IGB briefing at some point. And I think I'll probably ask the officers to maybe bear this in mind and bring forward a briefing at some point in the coming months. Thanks very much. Uh, councillor McHugh, please.
Thank you. Um, my question relates to the table on eight, at eight point two in this report, um, which shows the October and November variances. Um, there's an amount of almost one and a half million, uh, reflecting additional repairs and planned maintenance, including specialist works in relation to damp and mould treatments. Um, and I, I would I note that there were one or two press articles in recent months on damp and mould issues across our housing stock. And I wondered if, um, of, officers could, could bring a report to update elected members on issues of damp and mould on our housing stock across the city.
Thank you. Uh, Tony, would you like to come back in on the first?
Thanks, convenor. Thanks, councillor McHugh. Uh, officers are currently working on a briefing note, um, as we speak. And we'll get elected members hopefully in the next few weeks. Thanks, convenor.
Thank you. I think I answered your question. Thank you very much. I see no more further questions or comments, so just move on to the next one. Take that as agreed. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Take Sean to item five, capital plan. You're asking the recommendations.
Report presents, uh, proposed changes to twenty four, twenty nine capital plan and advised capital plan for twenty five to twenty thirty. Uh, councillor Coleman, please.
Thank you, Mr convenor. At four point six, it states St Ferguson Adler Primary Schools continue to be inspected in accordance with guidelines. Uh, these currently show no concerns with the condition of the RAC, but child repairs, uh, of an area are planned for summer twenty five to develop accurate costs for wider remediation of these two schools. Can local elected members please be kept up to date with the outcome of these trials? And assuming they're successful, when will the wider remediation of these two schools take place?
Thank you for the question. Can I bring in Mr Martin? Would you like to respond to that, please?
Thanks, convenor. Thank you, councillor Coleman, for the question. Yeah, I can give the assurance that, um, depending on the works that are actually carried out and the results of these, once we have a developed programme, we'll, uh, able to keep them updated on, uh, developments from that and what we do going forward.
Thank you very much. Answer your question?
Yes, thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks very much. I see no further questions or comments, so we'll take that report as agreed. Willie, please.
Thanks. Item six, then, is Treasury Management Activity Report. This is for noting.
A report of views of Treasury Management Activities from the period first of April to the thirtieth of September twenty twenty four. Any questions or comments? I don't see any, so take that as agreed. Thank you.
Okay, item seven then, before his antisocial behaviour report. This is for noting.
Again, another antisocial behaviour report, provides an overview of activity of the team for the period first of October to the thirty first of December twenty twenty four. And if any questions or comments? Don't see any questions or comments. We'll take that report as agreed. Thank you.
Yeah, item eight then, is amendment to non-domestic rates and empty property relief operational policy. You're asking the recommendations.
Yeah, thank you. Any questions or comments? No, I don't see any, so we'll take that report as agreed as well. Thank you.
Yeah, item nine is approval for the procurement of school trips with periods covering two thousand and twenty five to two thousand and thirty. You're asking proposals.
Again, thank you very much. And I have a question from councillor Crichton. So, so straight to the question, please.
Thank you, convenor. I'm just wondering what has prompted this change? Um, has the existing arrangements of allowing schools to book school trips direct with approved school trip suppliers over the limit, uh, of fifty thousand ever caused an issue? And also, can I just have an assurance, um, that this will not har, make it harder um, for the schools and for the senior leadership, uh, senior leadership, um, of those schools um, to actually book trips? Because especially my group feel that school trips are vital, um, for the development of, um, pupils and across the city. And I think, um, we've been hearing that it's been harder in recent years, and I think with this change, um, I don't see why we are making it. So just wondering what has prompted this? And just an assurance, um, to, um, really make sure that it's not making it harder, um, for our schools to get pupils on those trips.
Thank you. I'll bring in Mr Emmett in the first instance, and Miss May after that.
Thank you, convenor. So this is intended to make it easier for schools to organise trips. The reality is with the cost of trips and with a large school attending, then it's possible now to get to the stage where you're exceeding that threshold. And rather than having to bring that back to committee, this will provide delegation for the process to proceed without delay.
Thank you, Mr Emmett. Miss May, would you like to comment as well?
I think Mr Emmett's covered it. Thank you. Should make it easier.
Thanks very much. Answer your question, Michael?
Um, yeah, thank you, convenor.
Okay, thank you. I see no further questions or comments, so we'll take this as agreed. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. Take Sean to item ten, Contract for the Service and Maintenance of Craft and Design Technology Equipment in Dundee Schools. You're asking proposals.
Yeah, and the, uh, report's quite explanatory. Any questions or comments? Don't see any, so we'll just take that report as agreed as well. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. Item eleven, then, Schools Make Us Lock Licenses. You're asking the report.
Yeah, and it's quite clear. No comments or questions? Nope. That was agreed. Thank you.
Thanks. And the remaining item, item twelve, Wireless Network Purchase. You're asking the report.
Again, any questions, comments? Nope, and that's quite clear. Thank you very much. And so take that as agreed.
Yeah, thanks, convenor. That's all the business.
Thank you, everyone. That's the business for today's evening. Thank you. Good night.
Bye.